Welcome, everybody, and I'm calling the meeting of May 14, 2020 to order at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for joining us on this Zoom virtual meeting for the Library Board of Trustees. Before we proceed, I want to take a moment to go over our meeting protocols for tonight. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, this regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely and is being broadcast live on the city's website and local cable channels. Limited staff are on-site for purposes of tonight's meeting and are practicing appropriate physical distancing. No public comments were received via email. In an effort to best facilitate dialogue and discussion during tonight's meeting, I'm going to ask that my fellow board members be mindful of muting their microphones when not speaking. I will call on board members to speak on each item, one by one, following each item on the agenda. If you want to speak at a different time, please feel free to just raise your hand and you will let, then I will let you know to be called on. I think that is it for the rules and the regulations here. And so we're just going to go on with the agenda. Let me find my agenda. Sorry, you guys, I got a lot of paperwork in front of me. And do I do the roll call, Kathy?
I'm not sure if we have to do a roll call, but let's go ahead and do that to be on the safe side. So go ahead and do that.
Does Sean do it or do I do it?
Sean can do it.
Okay. Bianca Richards?
Present.
David Ewens?
Present.
Deborah Beadle?
Present.
Annie Chang?
Present.
Dr. Melina?
Present.
Thank you.
And then the staff that are present are Kathy Billings, the Library Director, and Sean Fei, our Administrative Secretary, and also our Council Liaison Mayor Robert Joe. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight with us. So we're just moving on to the agenda. In our first item, we're having a special presentation with the budget outreach, and I'd like to call on, is that going to be our City Manager and our Finance Director?
Correct.
Okay. So am I turning it over now to the City Manager, Stephanie DeWolfe, or to the Finance Director, Karen Isay?
I'm going to hand it over to Karen. She's going to make the presentation, but I'm available for questions as well.
Got it. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, Karen, thank you. So Karen? Karen was having-
You're still muted, Karen.
She wasn't. She's disconnected connection. Okay, you're okay, Karen? Okay.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sean, I believe we have a presentation. Would you pull it up?
Yes.
And if I could, Sean, I'll just ask you to click next as we go through these slides.
Will do.
Alrighty, thank you again, Commissioners, for hosting us this evening as part of the budget. Hello?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you again for hosting us as part of our budget outreach, which is of particular importance this year. As many of you already know, we are facing some unprecedented financial challenges resulting from the coronavirus. The coronavirus, the health pandemic, has had immediate and catastrophic effects, not only on health, but also on the economy. Local governments have been hit particularly hard as they rely on revenue sources, which directly stem from economic activity. And as social distancing continues, those effects on economic activity are compounding. Many economists suggest that recovery will be slow even after public gathering restrictions are lifted. Today, we'll look at the impacts in terms of effect and recovery. Quiet, please, Sean? By seeing how the city's top revenue sources might be affected.
There we go. Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. We will break this down into three timeframes. So there will be short term through June 30, 2020, that's the end of this fiscal year, midterm through the end of next fiscal year, June 30, 2021, and long term, three years and beyond. Next slide, please, Sean. Thank you. The city's top four revenue sources include property tax, sales tax, the utility users' tax, or UUT, and user fees. Half of the city's general fund is brought in by property tax, which is approximately 15 million. Property taxes are assessed at 1% of the property value, and the city receives 24 cents on the dollar. They're typically slow to respond to economic downturn because of the way they are assessed, due, and paid. If we look back at the Great Recession in 2008, and even further to the dot-com bubble in 2000, there's a pattern of a 1 to 2% reduction in revenues, which indicates that the revenue remains fairly stable. However, last week, Governor Newsom issued a late payment waiver on property taxes for commercial and residential through May of next year, and this has not happened in any recession before. It's unclear how this late payment waiver will affect us at this point. Next is sales tax. Last November, city residents passed Measure A, which applied a 3/4 cent sales tax, bringing up the city's sales tax rate to 10.25%, consistent with surrounding cities. Of that, the city receives approximately a 1.75% share. And as we've seen, sales tax is rapid to respond to economic downturns. Simply in this quarter, some of our top producers, including restaurants and gas stations, are down by 28%, which equates to 200,000 in revenue loss. Additionally, here, Governor Newsom issued an executive order for small businesses to defer their late payments one full quarter, and that's up to a 300,000 deferment of sales tax. Moving on to UUT, or utility users' tax, the city has a 7% UUT tax rate, which taxes different types of utilities, including water, electric, phone, and cable. This entire amount, or 3.4 million, goes entirely to the city, and it's largely unaffected by the pandemic, although it's important to note that this is a diminishing revenue source, meaning that next year, we will get less of this source than we did the previous year. Every year, it goes down little by little because people are just conserving more water and using less traditional cable sources, things like that. It's important to note also that the UUT is scheduled to sunset June 30, 2022, if not renewed by voters. Next on the list is user fees. The city charges the cost of recovery or less for city services. The amount is used to cover the cost of providing the services. In some cases, the city subsidizes a lot more, like in community services, and somewhat less, like in planning. These services are rapid to respond, these fees, excuse me, are rapid to respond in an economic downturn, but the type of response we see greatly depends on behavioral patterns and on the type of disaster. Here, we see a social distancing order largely affecting gatherings, so we're going to see a reduction in facility rentals and things like that. Next slide, please. So next, we'll look at our short-term revenue loss. Through June 30, 2020, we'll be looking at approximately a 1.6 million loss in revenues, 100,000 of that in property taxes. We're not seeing a significant change in UUT at this point. It's coming in at its target, however, again, it is a diminishing revenue source, and we can expect to see less next year. Sales tax at 300,000, and again, this is a combination of both reduction in sales tax, like I mentioned, a 28% reduction, and payment deferment, for a total of 300,000. And finally, user fees. Alone in facility rentals, we're down over 200,000, and we don't expect to see any of that through the rest of the year. We're also down in parking fees, parking citations, permits, applications for business licenses. All that is significantly decreasing our user fees through the end of the year to an 18% loss. Next slide, please. To match those short-term losses, we have to match them with short-term reductions, and the biggest chunk that we have to work from is capital costs. We looked to pull approximately 1 million out of capital costs from other projects. We also looked at hiring freezes, travel and training freezes, contract reductions, furlough of non-working part-time employees, and operational budget freezes for a total of up to 1.7 million. You can see there weren't a lot of choices here, or a lot of wiggle room, when it came to getting that full, to meeting that full 1.6 amount. Under contract reductions, there are some contracts that we will see sooner, like crossing guard contracts. Since schools are closed, you know, there's an immediate stop to that contract, but when looking at potentially renegotiating our landscaping contract, that'll be done through the budget process. Next slide, please. Talking about midterm revenue losses through June 30, 2021, we see property taxes at a 4% loss. That's a 1 to 2%, as I mentioned earlier, just because, as history has shown, we see a 1 to 2% loss following recessions, another 1 to 2% loss for non-payment. And this also, it's important to note, doesn't include Governor Newsom's order. We still don't know how that will affect the city's property taxes. Next on the list is UUT. Like I mentioned before, it is a diminishing revenue source, and we do see a 2 to 3% reduction every year in that source. Next is sales tax. Sales tax is a combination, again, of two quarters of potential losses, like we've seen this quarter, and continued deferment or payment plans through multiple years. And finally, user fees. Alone next year, if we didn't rent any facilities out, we would see upwards of a 600,000 revenue loss, and that's very realistic, the way things are going, that public gatherings might not continue through next spring. Camp med fees, recreation fees, again, permit fees, fines, parking, all that to a tune of about 31%. And this is really middle-of-the-road. Now, we think even if we opened up tomorrow, people wouldn't immediately, it's not a light switch where people would immediately start spending like they used to, or gathering like they used to. So we're accounting for that in those assumptions. Next slide, please. To match those midterm revenue losses, we are continuing the short-term reductions that you saw on the list before. We also need to consider shifting additional capital dollars to meet that number. In looking at MOU reopeners, we can see the possibility of eliminating cost-of-living adjustments and considering reductions in our workforce. If you see below 70% of our budget is personnel, we are a service organization, and in that, all of our money, or most of our money, I should say, goes towards our people. As you can see, we have 22% in operations, and that number cannot be cut back very much before it starts affecting the ability for the city to do its business. And finally, transfers out miscellaneous, that's where you see the capital dollars, where we're considering shifting additional capital dollars. And we're looking at all this in terms of the budget outreach. Next slide, please. And the departments themselves. As you can see here, half of the city's budget is allocated towards public safety, and the rest of the city's budget is split pretty evenly throughout. It's important to look at this because there's only so much we can cut back before being unable to meet our mandates. The library has an MOE. Public Works needs to continue issuing permits. Planning and Building needs to complete their general plan. Finance needs to complete audits and budgets annually. So you can see, there's not a lot of wiggle room in terms of core functions here. And we'll look at all of this as we move through the budget process. Next slide, please. And our budget outreach. Right now, we have an online education and communication platform where we are engaging with our community to show them where our top revenue sources are and how they're affected by this pandemic, so they can see where we might need to reprioritize. And part of that is the engagement or the survey, where we ask everyone to reconfirm their priorities or to engage with us in a dialogue, so as to hear the community's voice and widen the pool of people who make that voice known. I know with the Safer at Home order, there are a lot of people that have been engaging in the survey, that haven't engaged in it before, and we actually, by engaging this way, we have an ability to tap into so many more residents that we didn't have that opportunity before. Previously, we would, you know, we would have town hall meetings at the library community room, and, you know, we would see 10 to 15 people every year, and a lot of times, it was just inaccessible, and we're definitely seeing the engagement access more people right now. That's all going to be used as part of the budget development and presented to the Finance Commission along with the draft budget, and finally, a council draft presentation on June 3, with a hopeful budget adoption by June 17. And as I mentioned, we have some, we have projections, we have to aim towards something, and we're aiming towards the middle ground here, so that as those changes come in, we're seeing things change week to week, day to day. Like I mentioned, before, before last week, we didn't know that property tax, late payments would, fees would be waived. So we have to look at this, you know, with a grain of salt, and think that we will be making regular amendments, and we will have to adjust regularly to meet the changing needs, both of the community, but of the economy. So with that, I just want to touch base. Next slide, please. A little bit on the long-term potential effects here. And on the one hand, we have UUT, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that the city, if city voters did not renew the UUT, there would be an additional liability to the city of 3.4 million in 2022, meaning we would have to cut back another 3.4 million. And as you saw already, there's not a lot of places to cut from in the city. We have a lot of core functions. There's not a lot of fluff. In addition to that, PERS has seen a big loss this year, and that's our pension fund. And if it continues the way it's going, that could be an additional $2 million in unfunded liability and payments for the city. Both of these things would start in 2022, meaning we would have an additional liability or payment to the city of 5.4 million. And these are both big ifs, right? You know, PERS could bounce back between now and the end of the year, and the UUT could be renewed by voters. So there are a lot of unknowns here, but it's important to see things in this context because not only do we want to prepare for now, but we want to prepare for long term as well. And with that, I will, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Karen? And if you could raise your hand, so I know who has a question.
Annie, it looks like Annie has a question.
Oh, I'm raising my hand. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Annie. There you are.
Karen, I'm just curious, if you go back to the slide with midterm revenue loss, the total amount for both property tax and sales tax was the same amount, 600,000, but then the percentage was different? And I was just curious why that was?
It's the percentage.
Or what the percentage is of?
It's of its previous, of its total.
Okay, thank you.
Amount, not of the total fund.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one.
David, yeah.
Yeah. Karen, you know, this is an extraordinary time when this is happening. Is there consideration being given to doing a rebudgeting every three months, six months, or something of that nature? Or how are you going to handle it? Because the best budget you can come up with now is probably not going to be what it will be three months from now.
Right, completely agreed. You know, I think the best way of knowing where we're going to be is to actually let it happen and adjust to that accordingly. And that's what I mean by saying, we have to have some kind of framework to move forward, but until we hit July, we're not going to see what happened in the last quarter, in April, May, and June, and we're not going to see what those real losses were, and we're not going to be able to prepare. So that's something that we're realistically considering, potentially having quarterly budget updates to, like I said, pivot whichever way we need to as quickly as we possibly can. Yes.
Any other questions? I don't, I'm not seeing everybody. I don't see Dr. Melina.
I'm here, and I have no question.
Okay, there you are. Okay, thank you.
Bianca, if I could add some questions? This is Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi. I just wanted to add, thank you all for taking the time to listen to the presentation tonight, and we do have a request for all of you as well. As you heard, these are unprecedented times, and we have some very difficult challenges in front of us with this budget. As Karen said, all of the decisions will be trade-offs among important things. There's no fluff, there's nothing that it will be easy to let go of. Cutting the budget will be trade-offs between things that are critical to all of us. It'll be between, you know, parks and fire, and library, and cops on the street, and those kind of struggles. And so it's more important this year than ever to get as much community engagement on the budget process as we can. So our request to you all is to be ambassadors for us on this issue and help get the word out to the community. We've built an entire budget engagement program on the internet, so it's completely accessible in that sense. We're getting some really good response to it so far. One of the questions that we ask on the budget page is, have you ever participated in a budget engagement process before? And so far, 80% of participants are saying they've never engaged with us before. So this is great. We're really reaching deeper into the community, but we know it's difficult to get the word out, particularly now with the pandemic. Everyone is so overwhelmed with news sources and information, and sometimes it's hard to wade through all that. But we know from the science that when people get an email or they see a post from a friend or a family member or neighbor, they're more likely to open it and to read it. So if the information about the budget comes from you all, to your friends and family, they're much more likely to entertain thinking about it and getting involved with it. So what we'd like to ask you is, if you could simply tell your friends and family about it, if you're a social media person, if you would do a post, and we will provide you with a prepared post, so you don't even have to write it. That was, one of your fellow commissioners on another commission requested that, that we prepare the post for you. And if you're just an email person, if you would email it out to all those folks as well. We just think it's really critical to make sure people understand what's going on. I would hate for anyone in the community to not know about these decisions, and then to hear about the cuts that are being made, and feel badly that they hadn't had a chance to voice their opinion and get involved when the decisions were being contemplated, which is now. And as Karen said, we have a fairly tight schedule. We normally start the budget much earlier in the year, which we, of course, did this year, and then when the pandemic hit, we had to throw all of that out and simply start over under new circumstances. So this is a fairly compressed budget outreach process, which is all the more reason why we need help getting the word out on the street and getting people to our website before it's too late. The council will be hearing the budget recommendation at their first meeting in June, and they will be acting on the budget on their second meeting in June. So the timeline is very short. We have about another week that will leave the budget site and the budget survey tools open. Karen, we're going to close on Monday, the 25th.
25th.
Monday, the 25th, is when the site will close. So the more you can help us get people through that site before Monday, the 25th, the better. And then, of course, our draft budget recommendation will be presented to the Finance Commission for their review and recommendation before it's presented to the city council. And then it's done at the council in two steps, so that the council, the first meeting, we present it, almost as for information, it gives the council a chance to absorb it, ask questions, ask us to come back with alternatives, those kind of things. And then the second meeting is in June, is when they would actually adopt it. So that's sort of the strategy right now, that's where we're going, and we would really appreciate your help with this issue. So thank you in advance for that. And thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to mention that I think you're reaching out to all the different commissions, so thank you very much. And also, the new City Scoop, is that what it's called?
Yes.
It is very good. I find it very accessible, it's easy to digest and to read, and I really do appreciate these communications that are coming out from the city, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you. I'm glad that's helpful.
Yeah.
And the scoop has-
Bianca.
The budget page is on the top of the scoop as well, so anybody that goes to the scoop will see it right there at the top.
Because we could, we could forward to people, can't we? If they're not already signed up for it?
Yes.
Encourage them to sign up to get the files.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, that'd be great.
Bob, did you have a question? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question, if you don't mind, to Karen. And that is, are you ready? Can you explain a little bit about the library mandate? And then also, in your overall budget scheme, what are the areas within that budget that affects maybe the library more than other areas? Okay?
So let me tackle your first question first. The MOE, as I'm sure you're all aware, as board members, it's our maintenance of effort in order to keep the tax that the library brings in, which is a little bit over 300,000. So we need to at least spend a little, slightly over a million to receive the 300,000, and that tax has been in place, I think, since the early 90s. But that's certainly a consideration when we're looking at where to cut. We see, you know, the library tax as a voter request in the community, saying they want to keep this, the library services at a certain level. So there's, every line item we look at, especially in the library, you know, and Kathy could probably articulate this better than I can, but we see as a core function, I know, I know in the survey at least, you know, you see how important the children's reading programs are. So all that feedback that we're getting through this survey is going to help us and make those decisions about how we reorganize those departments to better serve residents, and certainly to better serve them in this kind of arena. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, you know, oh, yeah.
Sure.
But I think for some of our newer commissioners, it was helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen?
Yeah, I have one question. On the MOE, if it turns out that you don't spend as much as you anticipated on the library, do you then have to make a refund?
I believe there's a clause where you can make that up in a year, and I'd have to look back. I don't know the timeframe particularly, but you do have the option to edit that tax, and that would go back to the people paying it, the residents, yeah.
Okay, Annie? All right, well, thank you, thank you so much, Karen, for presenting this very important and timely subject to us. Okay, and then moving on with the agenda, again, we had no public, no email public comments, so we're going on now to the review. You got, and you all get a chance to review and approve of, review the minutes of the last meeting? Can I get a-
Do you want a motion?
Motion? Sure.
Yeah, unless anyone has any comments, then I move that they be approved.
Yeah, and remember, fellow commissioners, we met in February, and our March meeting was canceled. We weren't going to have enough people. So the minutes only reflect back to February and the meeting. Is that correct, Sean and Kathy? We canceled the March meeting.
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Okay. So we have a motion to approve of the minutes. Did I get a second? I'm sorry. Was there a second from anybody?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Okay, so the, there's a motion to approve of the minutes by David and a second from Annie. Okay, thank you, Annie. Okay, so the, there's a motion to approve of the minutes by David and a second from Annie, and all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, so it looks like the minutes of February 13th have been approved. Okay, thank you all. And too much paperwork here in front of me. Sorry, you guys. Okay, so that was, that, so now we're going into the reintroduction of library services. Kathy, now are you going to be presenting this part?
Yes, I am.
So our director of the library, I'll turn it over to Kathy Billings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, for being here and for being patient with us as we figure out this new technology. I think we're doing pretty well so far. I'm going to have Sean, I have a short slideshow just to walk us through some of the topics that I want to cover today. So I'm going to have him launch that slideshow and when we're at the end of the slideshow, we'll have plenty of time to discuss and go over some of the details. So Sean, go ahead and start that for me if you don't mind. So the library has, as you know, been closed to the public since, I believe, March 20th. And staff have been working full-time from home. The full-time staff have been working full-time from home and have been working on a lot of special projects, but also spending a lot of time thinking about COVID-19 and how it impacts library services, because obviously it has a tremendous impact on the services that public libraries traditionally provide. So what I want to do today is walk you guys through some of the issues and what we're calling our reintroduction of services plan that describes the types of services that we can provide in this particular environment and how we intend to do that. So we'll go to the next slide. So the first thing I want to just make everyone aware of, I know that for most people, there's so much information out there about the different orders and what's happening and what the rules are. I wanted to give you guys some clarity on that. Library services currently are not on the list of businesses or organizations that are allowed to operate. So the state of California's stay-at-home order currently states that libraries may not operate. And the county's order also, which is the order that we are subject to here, is also currently does not allow libraries to operate. So I know I'm getting a lot of questions from the public and from interested parties about why aren't we doing curbside service? And, you know, what's happening and when are we going to open up? And the reason that we are not yet doing any kind of takeout service is simply because the county and the state do not yet technically allow it. So I know that there are libraries doing these services. They're managing to do that for a number of different reasons. I think that some library systems are using workers in the disaster service worker mode. But if you read the orders, it seems fairly clear that library personnel are not considered essential employees and really should not be reporting to the workplace at this time. So the good news is, and we'll go to the next slide, that libraries are in the second stage of reopening, both in the state and the county plans at the moment. So we're currently in stage two. As you guys know, on May 8th, before the Mother's Day weekend, the county and the governor both opened up certain types of retail for curbside service or door-side service. And then soon, they say, other types of lower-risk businesses will be able to open. But as of the new order that the county put out yesterday, libraries are still not allowed to operate. And, but it is hopeful that we will be able to open sometime in this phase two. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes to try to help the state and the county understand library services. We really see a distinction between what could be seen as our retail-type service and our in-person services. The in-person services, I think, are certainly higher risk and we probably do not want to have people gathering in the library building until sometime later in this process. But for sure, if other types of businesses can operate retail, there's no reason in my mind why libraries can't. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes to try to communicate that to the state and the county so that we can hopefully start and launch takeout service. And we'll go to the next slide. So I just wanted to give you an idea of kind of what's going on behind the scenes in libraries. You know, luckily, it's a great professional community and there's a lot of communication. So the State Library has produced a document called Reopening Guidance for California's Libraries: Issues to Consider. And this document was submitted to the State of California Health Department and they are now reviewing that. So that document, once the Health Department gets its, has its review and returns it back to the State Library, will be a really wonderful reference point for all libraries as we try to figure out what we need to do to operate safely. The document was developed by the State Library, but in conjunction with directors from all over the state. The directors across the state have been meeting every two weeks for the last eight weeks to discuss these issues and share ideas and information, and that has also been very helpful. Another resource that we're all relying on in libraries is a knowledge base that's basically a shared repository where libraries are uploading all of their own plans for reopening and for curbside service and for everything else that we're all grappling with. So that's been very helpful. We are all developing our own kind of plans, but to be able to reference other plans from other cities and municipalities and other library systems has been very helpful. And finally, one big issue in libraries certainly is the idea of materials handling and how long this virus can live on surfaces. That's a concern for staff, obviously, and for customers in terms of safety. So right now, the best knowledge that we have is from a study that took place or that was published in March, a peer-reviewed study that talks about how long the virus can live on surfaces. But the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which is a federal entity, is funding a large study that's going to look at these, this specifically, looking at paper-based materials, circulating collections and other types of collections. And that data should come out hopefully in August. So that will be helpful to have a little bit more confidence about what exactly the risk might be in terms of lending materials. And we'll go to the next slide. So as I said, staff have been working very hard behind the scenes on a reintroduction of services plan. And what services are going to look like? How are we going to provide them? What does it mean for us? And, but essentially, we have five primary objectives that are outlined in the plan. One is obviously to keep staff and customers safe. The second one is to provide access to our physical materials. The third is to provide access to computers and Wi-Fi. In times like this, libraries are incredibly important to people who do not have that type of access at home and they can't go into Starbucks and other businesses to use Wi-Fi. So finding a way to give people access to computers and Wi-Fi is really high on our list of priorities. Continuing to provide access to digital resources is high on our list of priorities. And finally, finding a way to provide service to customers that doesn't mean they have to be in the library physically. So those are our main priorities. And on the next slide, we'll just look at some of the challenges that these are up against. So really, you know, libraries have been now for years, you know, trying to be gathering places and community hubs and all of this kind of really intense in-person gathering type place. And so that's really upended by this, by this crisis. You know, we get 21,000 people come to the library every month. And so how then do we, if we can't have those people come to the library, how are we going to serve them? So it's a big change for libraries and library staff to think about how are we going to continue to serve people when we can't see them and be with them in person. Some of this is going to require staff to get some new training. You know, we might be doing a lot of video editing, things that we haven't had to do before, so that's a challenge. It's not insurmountable by any means, but it is something that we have to think about. What technology do we need to have in place? And what skills do staff need to have to provide services in this new environment? The digital divide is a significant issue from our perspective. We, again, as I've just said, a lot of people do not have either the technology at home or the access to the internet at home or even the skill set to use technology if they have it. So thinking about how are we going to enable those people and make them more able to receive the services that we're providing in a virtual or digital form. And then, of course, the budget challenge, which you've just heard all about. I'm going to speak a little bit more about that, just because I want to let you know that the CARES Act, which is the federal act that is offering relief to a number of organizations and entities, is the state of California has about $3.3 million, I think is what they got. The State Library got $3.3 million from the CARES Act. So the State Library is looking at how to allocate that. The first thing that they've done with it is to sign a contract that is, will cover all public libraries in California for the online summer reading program app Beanstack, which we already subscribe to. The Friends of the Library pay for that for us. We will get a rebate since we've already paid and now the State Library is going to pay for it for all libraries. I don't know how much that's costing them. There hasn't been a lot of information yet out of the State Library about what they're going to do with that $3.3 million. But the good news is that there is also a pot of $15 million that the Institute for Museum and Library Services has made available from the CARES funding that we can apply for directly. So we will be looking at that and deciding what we are going to apply for. Our thinking at this time is that we're probably going to be looking at Wi-Fi hotspots that could be checked out to the public, so that people who don't have access to broadband at home can access the internet and do their schoolwork, et cetera. So we will be looking at that and thinking about other possibilities that we might want to apply for funding. California Humanities, the National Endowment for Humanities, also has some CARES funding and that is open to libraries as well. So we'll be deciding in the next week or so what we are going to apply for. The deadline, I think, for both of those is maybe June 12th. So let's go to the next slide. And we'll just look at these objectives, the five objectives, one by one quickly. Obviously, being safe and keeping people safe and trying to do our part to flatten the curve and make sure that the health systems are not overwhelmed by illness and patients. We want to keep everybody safe and healthy. So we have a plan drafted that kind of very specifically goes over exactly what protocols we're going to be instituting, both when staff come back to work and for a future time when and if the public is allowed to come back into the building. So that obviously involves, you know, all the basics, masks, gloves, wipes, hand sanitizer, all that kind of stuff, physical distancing and marking foot traffic on the floor so that people know where to stand if they're waiting in a line, et cetera. So all of that will come into play once staff come back to work and if we do library takeout and then at some later date, if people are actually allowed to come into the building. And then again, quarantining or sanitizing the circulating library materials. Right now, the standard is a 72-hour quarantine, and so that is what our plan specifies. And then again, if and when we are allowed to have people in the building, customers in the building, we are working on how to control that access so that it is safe. The likelihood would be that we are allowed to operate at a certain percent of full capacity. But even so, we will need to control that very, I think, carefully to make sure that, you know, we can't, if we can only have a smaller number of people in, we can't have someone sit there for, you know, the whole eight hours when somebody else can't get in and can't get a turn. So that's something that we will look at later on down the road when we actually have people that need to, when we actually have the possibility of having people in the library, but I do think that that is a ways off. Next slide, please. So the objective to provide access to physical materials. We've developed our plan for what we're calling library takeout. That's our quote-unquote "curbside service." We don't intend to walk to the curb. We're going to let the customers walk to the door of the library. So we're calling it library takeout. People will be able to place holds on items in the catalog. Some of you who use the library may know that in the past, you could only place holds on items that were actually checked out. But we've made a change to the catalog so that when the time comes and we launch this, people will be able to place holds on any items in the catalog, whether they're checked out or on the shelf. So people will be able to hold items. We will, we will collect those items, check them out, package them into a bag, and there'll be a no-contact, touchless drop-off, you know, so that someone can come and take their bag and go without much in-person interaction. We're also planning to launch what we're calling Materials Matchmaker. So we have an online form and a paper form for those who need it that would allow someone to let us know, let the librarians know what genre they're interested in, what types of materials they want. And they can basically just fill out this sort of request form and we'll put together recommendations based on the information they provide us in the form. So that's another method that people can use to connect with materials since they won't be able to browse the shelves themselves. And then obviously, they can, when the time comes, they'll be able to call us, as they always do, and say, hey, can you please hold this for me? And we will grab those things for them. We also will be working with the senior center to provide materials to seniors that are participating in the meal program that are, because their meals, they will not, seniors likely will not also, will also not be able to come into the facility to have their meals. So they will continue with the delivery service that they've been doing since mid-March. And so we will make sure we serve that community through the same process. So we're excited about this. We've done a lot of work to think about it and to get it together so that it will work and can work once we actually have the permission to, to launch such a service. We are eager to do so. Next slide. Again, the objective to provide access to internet computers and to the Wi-Fi. I think that, again, it's going to depend on the county order. But even before, I'm hoping that there will be a middle stage where we can allow people to use our computers by appointment when we aren't allowing people to come in and just hang out in the library or browse the stacks, but that we could have very controlled access to the computer workstations. But again, that will all be dictated by, by the county order, and so we will just have to wait and see. But again, that's really important in our minds, so we are hoping that we'll be able to have some controlled access to at least use computers. And then again, as I said, we are going to look at funding for Wi-Fi hotspots so that we can check those out to people and they can use the internet at home. Next slide. So providing access to digital resources. Again, people have been using the digital resources. Statist, our statistics have gone, you know, through the roof since February and people have been using everything more. So that's great. We're thrilled that the message has gotten out and that people know we have these resources and that they're taking advantage of them. But of course, there are still people that do not have access to digital resources for various reasons, so that's a concern. But we are going to be, you know, utilizing some new platforms that we haven't used before and trying to find ways that we can help people get their technology skills up to speed. So we are looking at some different things. We are looking at adjusting the library's digital resources collection to make sure we have materials that actually support the economic recovery. So, you know, whether it's job-seeking, skill-building, professional development type opportunities, resume writing, that kind of stuff. So we're looking, making some adjustments to our digital resources so that those, those activities will be supported. And we also, summer reading program will be all virtual, obviously, this year. So we'll be using our Beanstack reading app for the second year in a row. We also will be launching a YouTube channel because a lot of our engagement will be video. And so we will have storytimes in video form and we will have wonderful Wednesday Wednesday performances in video format, and we will have craft, um, activities led in a video format. So, we'll be using YouTube and, um, again, looking at other new platforms that we maybe haven't used before, um, to try to reach people in this new environment. I wanted to mention quickly, uh, the idea of, um, blocked customer accounts. You know, we had been talking before this all happened about, uh, fine-free, and, um, in discussion with the, the city manager and the, uh, finance director, I think that this budget cycle is not going to be the right time to try to implement a fine-free, um, a fine-free library. So, what that means is that we do still have, the, the, the reason we wanna go fine-free is because we wanna make sure we have equitable access for everyone, and, um, if we, if we don't go fine-free now, we wanna look at other alternatives to make sure that people's cards are not blocked by fines so that they can access our, um, digital resources. So, we, we're gonna do a few things. We probably will raise the block limit, and we also are looking and talking about, um, a one-time amnesty where we would perhaps wipe out all fines on all cards, so everyone gets a nice, clean slate. So, um, that is where we are with digital resources. And lastly... Next slide, Sean. Um, again, just really changing the way we do business, um, and looking at how we can provide, um, customers the services that they are used to, but doing it virtually or digitally. So, library takeout, I think, is huge. People are really, um, eager to get ahold of materials again, um, and frustrated that they can't do so yet. Um, again, we're looking at new platforms that we can use to try to engage people, um, and, uh, auto-renewal is something that we will implement once items are actually due again. Right now, the due dates have been extended, but auto-renewal will mean that people get an extra, uh, two renewals on any checkout, so they don't have to bring the items back as quickly as they might have in the past. And then again, looking at new, new tools that we can use to do outreach and engagement and education-type programs, uh, with customers. We're also looking, um, at the local history collection and ways of, ways we can, um, use that to engage people. Um, we've been doing a lot of that over the last few weeks since we've been able to work from home, and I think the next slide might actually, yeah, the next slide just shows an example of that. So, we've launched, um, our first, um, online exhibition that's based on holdings from the local history collection, and it's a really great platform that our local history librarian selected for this, and we'll be able to do lots of, um, exhibits, uh, on local history using this platform, which, um, people are really excited about. They like the local history collection, and it's definitely a collection that you can't, you know, if you can't come into the library to use it, it's hard to access. So, I think this will be a nice way of giving people access to that collection, um, when we can't have people in the library. And then, lastly, just a few other considerations on the next slide. Thanks, Sean. Um, we're, we're well aware that the Friends of the Library are going to be impacted by this. Um, they already have been, obviously, impacted by this because the bookstore is their, uh, main source of revenue, and they have now been closed for two months. So, that's very significant. Um, I'm actually meeting with the Friends of the Library President and the Bookstore Steering Committee tomorrow to try to brainstorm some of these issues and think about how we can get their revenue, um, generating, even if people cannot come in and use the bookstore. So, that's something that's in the works, and we are thinking about it. Uh, passport services also, something that, um, is important to people, and we, uh, need to think about how we can continue to provide those services. Um, we also can think about whether we want to provide, do more passport services because it is a revenue stream. Um, so, that's something we're talking about and thinking about. And then finally, library hours is something that needs to be, uh, talked about and decided. I, I don't see us being open, um, if we're doing takeout only and not having people in the building. Um, I don't know that we need to be open seven days a week and have the staff in the building seven days a week. So, that's something that we'll be talking about as well, and not on the slide, but something that we are thinking about is the cooling center. You know, the library and the senior center are both cooling centers, um, in the summer, and that's an important resource for people in our community, so we need to think about whether or not that's something we can accommodate, and I think we probably can, perhaps in the community room, but that remains to be seen as well. And with that, um, I will open it up to any comments, questions, feedback, whatever, whatever you guys have to say. I'm happy to hear it and, um, and, and answer any questions that I can answer.
Thanks, Kathy for the presentation. That was very good. Um, so, we can just go, just raise your hands if you've got any questions? I have a few, but I'll wait for the others, and then I'll ask my questions.
Mario's ready.
Okay, Mario.
This is more of a comment than a question, and I'm glad that, that Bob Joe is with us. One of the concerns that I have is that what may end up being the biggest problem is not social distancing or face masks, but when we get into public buildings, whether it's the library or the city buildings, is the air conditioning system. Because it may be that, that the amount of turnover of air, the ventilation, may be the most important thing to kind of blow any virus that's in the building through it. So, I would hope that as we consider opening up these public buildings, we give consideration to the ventilation.
Thank you, Dr. Molina. That's a good point. We've, we've thought about that and seen studies, you know, that it's not encouraging. You know, it's hard to know how to keep people safe in this environment, so, um, I will definitely make a note of that and, and talk to the Public Works Department about it.
Kathy. Yeah, I think I'd like to respond, um, Mario. I think you were referring to all public buildings, so we're even, you're even talking about the City Hall.
Yep.
And, uh, and then, um, the other buildings that we do have. And, and maybe what we need to do as part of our capital improvement, even though, is to relook at, because I know the air conditioning system there at the, um, Police Department is very antiquated, and, um, it's, it doesn't work well, it doesn't know how to share with the next building, uh, things like that, so, um... Kathy, I think, um, let, let's bring it up to, uh, Pu- Public Works, but I, but I'm also planning to bring it up as part of my comments to the, um, City Council at the next City Council meeting.
That would be great.
Or soon after that.
I mean, I think that's one of the challenges with this, is that the studies that would show us how to move forward aren't completed yet, so it's, it's, um, we're kind of neck and neck with, with the research that would give us the information we need about what the safest way to move forward is, isn't, isn't done yet. So, it's, it's tricky, but definitely it's a conversation we can have with Public Works.
Actually, I'd like to add something, you know, just for a minute, and Annie raised her hand, so I caught that, Annie. Just to give you a feel for what Kathy was, uh, sharing regarding our senior lunch program. We have approximately daily eighty to eighty-five lunches that we deliver to the seniors daily. It has gone up ever since the coronavirus, uh, from about thirty that we do to now eighty to eighty-five. And then Saturdays, uh, we provide sack lunches for the seniors that they can then use and eat, um, on, on the weekends. So, um, it, it's a big program now, and all of our, uh, drivers that we have, uh, are actually doing the actual delivery. Um, our delivery for our senior lunch programs were done before by senior volunteers, but now we're using, uh, our, our own drivers and doing that service is working out real well. So, having the books and things like that, even an added service. Thank you.
And I think, um, I wasn't, I know Dave, you had your hand up, and then Annie.
Go ahead, Annie.
Annie, you wanna go?
Sure. Um, thank you so much, Kathy, Sean, and staff. Like, this is just incredible, first of all, because I know, I can only imagine what you guys are managing personally, but to have done all of this, and, um, I've been reading the newsletter going out, and, you know, you guys have just really pivoted in the moment so much, and I know the whole community, um, is so grateful for that, um, especially the parents that I speak to. I am curious about the, um, the fine and the policy around that, and I wanted to know what the current extension is, because I know that there was an extension, given that, you know, a lot of us checked out books that last week before the library closed, and there was notice that would be extended. I'm just curious about the policy, because I do understand the value of that revenue stream, although, you know, we said before it was small relative to the whole city budget, but at a moment where the state and city, different cities are thinking about how do we provide the most relief to families, so it's in this moment financially, just, you know, what the, what the thinking was from staff on, you know, why not to move this forward, but right now?
So, um, currently, uh, yes, right now, the, the, all items are due on July 1st, and we've been waiving any, um, I mean, no items have been coming back, but any items that come back, we have, had waived the fines on, um, just as a courtesy, because this is such a complicated, difficult time. We don't want people to be worrying and stressed about, you know, turning something in late or, or being, um, penalized during a difficult time. I think that the, the issue with making a decision to, to eliminate the fine, uh, structure altogether, um, which is where we were going and hoping to do that, this, with this change in the fiscal year, um, it, with so much uncertainty around the budget as a whole, I think we just felt like it, it wasn't a good time to, um, take away a revenue stream when we don't know what all the moving parts are in the budget. It just, you know, it, we, we have to go out with this budget outreach and tell the community that we have these shortfalls, and then to say, "Oh, and by the way, we're, we're gonna cease this particular revenue stream," um, just didn't seem like, uh, a message that we could very easily take to the community at this time. So, I, I really do think ultimately we will go fine-free, um, and that we can do some things in the interim to get us through this coming fiscal year that will, um, make the burden on folks less. Like I said, perhaps a one-time amnesty or a one-time, um, uh, fine forgiveness, so that people who have a balance on their accounts, we can, we can cancel those balances and, um, they can kind of have a clean slate. And then that in, hand-in-hand with auto-renewal should make a huge difference for people. Most libraries report that their fines, um, overdue fines go down about fifty percent when they, um, institute auto-renewal. So, the hope would be that people would have a clean slate, and then auto-renewal would help them to, um, not incur fines, and then we can look at the fine-free policy again, not this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year. Does that answer your question?
It definitely does, and, um, appreciate all the thought you put into it. I just, um, I got two follow-up questions. Do we need to provide any recommendation as far as, um, having that amnesty in place? And then the second question, can we get some data around what we are seeing as far as the fines are accumulating or not, and if we needed to make that decision earlier than, um, this time next year for folks? I just don't want families to feel like if it's gonna be a burden next year to come and return the book, that that's one more thing. They have to think about why they shouldn't use the resources.
Right, right. I mean, and that's exactly, we don't want people to feel, um, yeah, we want, we want to give people access, and we don't want people to be burdened. Um, I don't know, uh, if, we definitely will talk about it at, at the, we can talk about it at our, at our next meeting, and I can bring it, um, by that time, I'll have talked more with the city manager about it, and we can, we can actually have a, a report and an action item on the agenda if you guys wanna take an action and, and make a, a specific recommendation. But, um, for sure, any materials that come back, you know, through the summer, I think we're thinking, would, would be checked in without accruing any fines. So, even if the stuff that's now due, um, first of all, the stuff that's due July 1st, auto-renewal go, will go into effect. So, all of those things will, um, get another three weeks for everybody. So, um, people, it's not like everyone has to show up at the library on July 1st and return the materials. We have eighteen thousand materials checked out, so it would be a lot of stuff all at once if that were to happen. Um, so, we'll, we'll try to stagger it so that people are bringing things back over time, and we will not assess fines on those materials. And then, yeah, we really need to look at ways to make sure that people have access to the collection, even if, um, overdue fines are still, um, uh, instituted. They, again, if we raise the block limit, then, you know, so, right now, the block limit for adult cards is $10, and then if, so if you hit $10, you can't use the digital resources and you can't check anything out. So, you know, if we make that block limit $25 or something like that, then, then people will still have access, and then when we go to fine-free in a year, we would just wipe those out, probably. So, I, I think we can...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can do it in a way that, um, that people are not disenfranchised from library services.
Well, Kathy, then, maybe can we bring that up for more discussion than at the next meeting as an action item?
Yes, we will do that, definitely.
All those points you just said we should bring up.
What's that?
All those points, then we can just, because those are very good points, and we can discuss more of those.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the Feb, at the, the March meeting that was canceled, the fine-free proposal was on that agenda, and so, we have, we have the data, and we just kind of need to rethink it, I think, for, um, these circumstances in particular, and looking at a way to make things easier for people in this coming fiscal year, and then looking at, um, looking at the fine-free, uh, policy for the following fiscal year. But yes, we'll put it on the agenda for June.
Great, thank you. And then, Dave, did you have a question? David?
Yeah, I've, I've got some, uh, items. First off, Kathy, I think, I think y- your whole team needs kudos. They've done outstanding job of just getting things in place. It's just really exemplary work on a lot of people's part, so I, I hope you extend that from the board to the whole team.
I will, thank you.
Yeah, please. Um, I do have some questions. Okay, so, so the first is that during this period of time, presumably there have been some costs that you haven't incurred, uh, things that, you know, the, the, the very fact that maybe the electricity isn't being turned on, or, or the air conditioning, who knows, the, uh, so, there has been some monies that have been saved. Um, do, do you have a feeling for how much has happened in that area?
Um, I don't think we're really saving much on utilities. Um, I, I, to be honest, I don't think, because of the, the library collections, they can't just turn off the climate control and things like that, so maybe we're saving a little bit, but I don't actually see the electricity bill, so I don't know that that's where we're gonna see a lot of savings. We definitely...
Go ahead.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, how, how about things like, are newspapers still being delivered, uh, delivered to the library and, and magazines and things of that nature, or have you suspended all of those?
Newspapers we suspended because they get delivered into the, uh, dropbox outside, which is locked. Um, magazines come in the mail, so we still receive those, um, and they will go out on the shelf when we reopen, and people can check those out as, you know, in the takeout service.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm not sure how the newspapers, you know, they, they've been on hold. I don't know if the newspaper, it'll depend on the newspaper, probably, whether they extend, um, extend our service by that amount of time. You know, it's like a vacation hold, essentially, so I'm not, we'll, we'll have to see there's which, which newspaper, um, how that's handled. So, we'll work through our vendor that, that we order those publications.
So, you're not seeing any significant, uh, monthly savings that accrue from the closure?
Not from the closure, other than the, the staffing. Um, you know, the, the part-time staff, as I think I emailed you guys, were furloughed, so that's the only really significant savings. But we also, I mean, the, the city asked us to, to stop spending, essentially, um, so we have cut back our spending, and, um, will be significantly underspent in a lot of different budget line items this year. But it's, but not in a way that has impacted, you know, we, as soon as the, the, the change happened, I think we spent about $25,000 on, um, digital, uh, books and ebooks, um, and we're still buying physical, while we had been buying physical books, we normally would've stopped at about this time of the year anyway, because we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year. So, um, there are savings in our budget, but, you know, the city asked all departments to, to stop spending so that we could try to, um, capture some of that general fund money to help us both this fiscal year and in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Um, in terms of the, you're calling it takeout service, takeaway service?
Yeah.
I can't remember which it is. Which is it? Which is it?
Takeout.
Takeout, okay. Um, how, how quickly would you be able to, to get that going? Is question number one. Uh, question number two is, do you envision that people would still have to come into the building, and, or would they just really come to the front door, and you could have set up a, a temporary thing in, in the front there where people could, don't have to go any further than, you know, interface with maybe one person? And, uh, uh, are you ready to move on it? And how many people do you need to staff that operation? I understand you don't know how many hours, but it seems to me that you would still be able to have a lot of people continue to work from home, a- and still comply with the safer-at-home.
Yeah, so, those are all good questions. So, for, for library takeout, um, the way that we envision it, uh, in terms of rolling it out, is that we need, um, some staff to be able to first come back in the building to, um, deal with the kind of floor plan, social distancing, signage, all of that kind of stuff that needs to be in place, even for staff to be in the building, much less to open takeout. So we need a little bit of time, maybe a week, um, in the building before we can actually launch takeout to the public. Um, and then, currently, the order, the county order, this customer is not allowed in the facility at all. So yes, people would be coming up, um, probably like a takeout window almost to the front door, we would put maybe a table up against the front door, they come up, we bring the bag to the table, set the bag on the table, walk away, they take their bag. Um, and we would also have to, again, all of these services, the county has requirements, so we would have to have signage, um, markings on the ground outside to mark how far apart people have to stand in the line. Um, there's, you, none of these businesses that are doing, um, retail takeout now, um, no one is allowed inside the facility in any of those retail businesses technically. I mean, I know we've all seen other things. Obviously, essential services like grocery stores, you're allowed inside, but all of the non-essential retail that they've recently-
Right, right.
-opened up. So, um, yeah, so right now, the thinking is that we, people would not be entering the building.
Good.
But again, that could change, you know, it could change. If, if they were allowed in the building, we would probably, I would prefer to see them come in, uh, one door, like a U, kind of a U-shaped traffic pattern, come in one door, pick up their stuff, go out the other door, to, to kind of allow people to not back up and, and be too close together. But, um, yeah, it's not gonna take us very long to, to roll this out. And then the question about how many people will it take to staff? Um, uh, that's a good question, it really depends on the volume, and we really have no idea what that will look like, it's just, we don't know, you know, what it's gonna look like. Are there gonna be, you know, hundreds of people taking advantage? Is it gonna be 10 people? We have no idea. Um, but it will take staff, because the staff will have to be, I mean, first of all, the book drop, when these 18,000 items come back, those all have to be handled, quarantined, reshelved. So, so we need staff to come and, and do the physical, um, handling of materials, and the checking out of materials. And then if the matchmaker service is, um, popular, that is gonna take staff time too. If someone is looking for, you know, basically reader's advisory and reading recommendations, that is gonna take some time too. So I don't, I don't know for sure how many staff it will take. I mean, the, the full-time staff are all still on the payroll and, um, would be able to work, um, and if we then need, uh, a part-time staff to come back from furlough to, to, um, carry this out, that, we would be looking at that. But again, the budget, um, is not yet, uh, decided or resolved, so we'll see where we end up. That could dictate, to some extent, how many part-time staff we're able to bring back, and, and things of that nature. So we, we're not quite there yet in terms of knowing what the staffing is gonna look like.
Have, have you given thought to the, this, you know, this massive potential of, of a, a large book return happening?
Yeah.
How that would be handled, is, is there an option of actually having people, uh, return books to, I, I, let me throw out the community room, uh, as an idea, and so, so that you can just have a staging area while they all pile up in there and, and get your hand around that?
Yeah, so what, what we're thinking is, so we extended the due date to July 1st, and, and the thinking, or the hoping, is that we might be able to open up the book drops, um, in June earlier, and then, um, you know, start to encourage people to, um, be bringing things back, um, earlier, uh, before they're due. Uh, we could potentially use the community room if we needed to, I'm not sure if we'll need to. Um, if we, if we spread it out over a long enough period of time and, and, um, have some extra bins available that people can use to drop in, uh, we might be okay, but, um, that remains to be seen. But yes, we've given it a lot of thought, and are thinking about how to handle that influx of materials, but I think the, the trick is to try to spread those returns out over a longer period of time if we can.
The, is it okay if I continue? Bianca? I've got a list of questions here, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, well, keep on going, Dave, yeah.
Okay. Um, Kathy, in, in the, I believe you call it the technical area in the back there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, it, it would appear to me that it would be extraordinarily difficult to be working in that area and maintain any, any physical separation unless you only had two people back there. Maybe three here to push, right?
Yeah, that's, we need to look at that space. I mean, our thinking is that, um, we, at the very least, you know, need to make sure that workstations are six feet apart. Um, we have purchased a number of, um, plexiglass, um, panels and screens that we can use to isolate people a little bit. But yeah, I mean, even just walking past each other down that corridor, um, i- is problematic. So, it's really a challenge, I think we need to look at, um, scheduling and who, who works when, um, and so yes, some people might still work at home, so we don't have so many people together at the same time at the library. Um, but I also think it's just a lot of behavioral, uh, training and changes. It's, a- as you guys all know, it's really hard to get used to this wearing a mask, and it's hard to get used to the idea that you can't, you know, go up and look over somebody's shoulder and talk about something. So I think that it's a lot of behavioral changes that we all need to, um, get used to and be, make it a habit. Um, but yeah, we need to look at that space downstairs, and we definitely, um, need to make some changes to make it, um, compliant with the county, uh, requirements.
Okay, so, so there's some reconfiguration that will have to go on in there?
Yeah.
Uh, or staggering of, of, uh, work hours, of the number of people that can be in there, or, or they, people continue to do the job from home, or something of that nature if they're able to do that.
Exactly, that's exactly, yeah, and that's why when, when, um, the first thing that will happen when staff are allowed to return is that it'll be a subset of staff that will come in to address those issues and do the physical layout changes that we need to do to make it, um, make it safe.
Okay. Um, what, one of the things that there's, there's a lot of talk about, eh, eh, is how, how do you do tracking and tracing of, uh, if someone is contagious, and let's say they come into the library, and then subsequently, you know, they, they report, oh, yes, I went into the library, um, or even the staff, staff may be a little easier. Um, and I, I, I'm very sensitive to some of this now, is that whenever I go into a supermarket or anything like that, I make sure I buy something, so they have a digital record of the fact that I was there, and if the, if there had been someone in that, in there at the same time, they can trace me, and let me know, okay. So where I'm headed with that is, is, um, we should consider that people should not be allowed into the library unless we know, have some record of who they were and what time they were in the library. Um, so, so something, when, when it's opened more widely, I mean, not for the takeout thing, but certainly more widely, I would certainly recommend we need to start thinking along those lines as well. Uh, because I wanna feel safe, and your, your staff wanna feel safe, um, that the person in front of me, uh, if they turn out to be positive, that I get to find out that yes, I've just been in contact with someone, or close to someone who was positive. So, just, just something I, for future, to, to maybe consider there. Um, and, um, I, I, I know that you, uh, are thinking about, eh, eh, when you can open up for internet services, and I would have to say that that is one area that I would be very particularly concerned about, with people sitting for periods of time at a terminal inside the library. Um, i- i- it just doesn't seem to me that that's even, uh, 2020, maybe sometime in 2021, you know, uh, we might see something like that, so maybe we don't have to deal with it right now. But, uh, uh, I, I would imagine that the next phase, assuming we go from takeout, uh, is that we maybe allow people in the library just to browse books, maybe for a very limited period of time, limited numbers of people, no, no sitting down, no chairs, you know, just grab the books that you want from the shelf, bring them and check them out, and get out as quickly as you can. So, I, I'm, I'm thinking there's more of a, of a phased approach that's incremental, based upon the conditions at the time. I, you, you know, South Pasadena right now, eh, is a hotspot. You know, if you look at the numbers, we're not in very good shape, and, uh, I think people are gonna be very cautious about going into any setting at the moment where other people are.
Uh, I, can I just speak to the, um, the phased issue?
Sure.
So, I guess that, um, I, I, I agree, it's definitely a phased issue, and it's, it's almost impossible to imagine it being safe to have any customers in the building. So our initial approach is that no customers will be in the building at all. Um, I, frankly, from, from a staff perspective, it, it's much easier to control, uh, behavior and social distancing, uh, for the computer users, because they can be assigned a computer that is, you know, six or more feet away from the next computer, and when their session is over, we can wipe, wipe it all down and disinfect it, and wait, and then have it ready for the next person. Um, you know, you've all been to the grocery store, it's a free-for-all in there, and people are, um, you know, get close to each other. So we're, we're really, um, not comfortable with people browsing in the stacks, um, because it's, it's, we're gonna end up in a situation where we're having to really monitor behavior, and, um, I think that that's, that's a little bit nerve-wracking to think about, and I don't know that, that we wanna be in that position, um, until it's really safe to do that. So for us, you know, having four people in the library using a computer, um, in a controlled fashion, seems much more manageable than opening it up to browsing, but we have talked about the idea of browsing by appointment. So do we have an appointment system, so that, you know, five people can browse, or one family can be in the children's room? So that's definitely stuff that we've talked about, and a, a ways, again, ways to, to let people access the collections, but I think that, um, the likelihood that the, the county is gonna let that happen anytime soon is probably slim, so we're sort of sitting on all the ideas, and, uh, we'll wait to see, and then go from there. When we get, when we get an order that says that we can let people in the building, we can decide what the best way to do that is, but I think that there's gonna be a lot of, um, control in terms of how we allow people to access the, the facility when the time comes.
One other question, and it relates to the schools. Um, I noticed whenever I visited the library, particularly, you know, in the afternoon, there would be a, a number of school, uh, children in, in the, in the library, uh, work, using the work tables and things like that, you know, working on little projects, very, very nice groups and so on. Um, um, are you in contact with the schools to let them know that that facility is not gonna be available for them anymore, and that the schools really should start to look at, uh, how they provide that kind of a s- interaction for group projects and what have you?
We have been in contact with the schools, not necessarily about, um, you know, whether we'll be open or not, I think each, each sector is kind of focused on their own issues right now, but we've been in contact with the schools, uh, both in the context of technology, we wanted to know, um, how many of their students, um, had Chromebooks, eh, issued to them, and how many Wi-Fi hotspots did the schools, um, issue? The school ordered, the, uh, school district ordered 100 Wi-Fi hotspots, but they couldn't get them, um, because of the back orders, uh, related to this, uh, crisis. So, um, we're, you know, we're in touch with them to try to make sure that we're running somewhat parallel in terms of, you know, if we're, if we're looking at a digital resource that we may discontinue, do they have it? Do they have something comparable? So we are in contact with them, but we have not yet had that conversation about, you know, the library, you know, may not be open, because, I mean, I guess on, on some level, my assumption is that, um, if they're following the, uh, county and state orders, they kind of know that already, but yes, we will reach out to them more. You know, everybody is so busy with their own issues, um, it's, uh-
It, it may be that they just, they may not consider that the amount of usage that their students give our library after school.
Right.
So it's just something you might want to point out to them, that-
Sure.
Hey, they, that your, your students have lost a resource that they are used to, and they could quite easily replace it themselves, frankly.
Yeah, and I think it's definitely, I mean, it's the parents, definitely, um, you know, these are, these are kids that are able to be in the library on their own, so it's parents who are gonna take up the, the burden of that if they can't come to the library and be there unattended, that means somebody else, they have to be somewhere else. So, yeah, we'll definitely connect with the schools about that as we get a little closer.
Right. Thank you Kathy.
Thank you. Good, all good questions and good, good thoughts, it's helpful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Um, yeah, Deborah, yeah, go ahead Deborah.
I think all my questions have been answered by everybody else, but I did also wanna say thank you so much for all the hard work you've put into this. I'm really impressed with how detailed what you've gone through and what you've been thinking about to prepare for being able to open up in different phases, and, um, I just also want to thank you for all the communications that you've sent out since the library's been closed, they've been great and very thorough, and I appreciate understanding and knowing what's been going on at the library, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any others? Um, all right, then I, I just have a few, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, the questions were answered, so thank you very much. Um, my concern is, I think you all know where I live, right across from the library, um, and so like, right now, it's, uh, you know, it's 8:20, and it's, the, the lighting is not the best at the library, so if we were gonna bring maybe an idea of bringing, especially if the summer comes on, services more outside, because you know, you can get Wi-Fi outside, I'm a little concerned about, um, some of the lighting and the signage issues, because, um, that really nice bench area, uh, uh, people are more and more coming out to sit there, and they're not doing a lot of physical distancing, and, uh, no masks, I rarely see people with masks, but they're there working, because they get the Wi-Fi, and I'm looking across the street right now, and there's several people at the entrance of the library working on their laptops, I can see them, and I just think, um, I think it's great, because that's where the Wi-Fi spots are, but I think we need to look at maybe, um, signage and maybe different kinds of lighting. And then also, if we have this take, uh, take, takeout service, uh, if we are gonna have people maybe, hopefully we're not gonna have a lot of lineup, but I don't know if we can think about any kind of umbrellas or canopies, because it does get kind of hot outside. And then that brings up, where, who pays for, where are the monies coming from if the library, if we are gonna have to invest in different kinds of, uh, supplies like signage, or let's say, uh, canopies, or takeout bags, uh, or, uh, even, uh, cleaning and sanitizing, is that gonna come out of the library budget, or does that come out of the CARES budget, or does that come out of the city general plan?
So, um, a, a couple of comments on that. There are, uh, some expenses that are probably related to, to kind of ramping up to, uh, do services in this new model, so that does include, you know, cleaning and sanitizing supplies. Um, there's technology expenses that are related to this. Um, a lot of these things will hopefully, uh, the city hopefully will get reimbursed, um, through FEMA or through other, um, funds, so there is some potential to get some reimbursement on some of these costs. Um, but, but it also, you know, we have some discretionary funds that we can use, you know, we, we have, like I said, we're, we're underspent significantly for our fiscal year budget this year, so the signage that I'm gonna be ordering, and the umbrella that I'm gonna be ordering for outside, you, you know, we have the funds to cover that in the library's, um, general fund, um, budget. Um, so yeah, I think that there, there are, there are things that are going to, um, have costs associated with them, but they're not- but they're not, they're not substantial. You know, it's not like there's anything that's going to cost a huge amount of money. It's sort of small things. So I'm not too worried about it, but it is a good question. And, and again, hopefully, we've been tracking, any expense that we've incurred related to the COVID-19 crisis has been tracked so that the finance department can submit that for reimbursement when those funds become available from FEMA and other federal agencies. So that's that, answer to that question. Hopefully that answers that question. And then as far as signage and lighting, we did already talk about signage, you and I, Bianca. And I haven't had a chance to put out signs, but we will do some signage outside about mask wearing. You know, again, the county is going to require that. If we open to any kind of service at all, you have to meet certain requirements. And that includes a variety of signage and instructions. You know, the new order that came out yesterday says that everybody in LA County must wear a mask when they leave the house. So obviously, you know, you've seen, not everybody is doing that. But, but the signage will try to enforce that and encourage people to do that. And so, yeah, we can do more signage outside the library even before we launch any kind of takeout service. We'll go ahead and work on that for the benches and the tables.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Those were, those were my questions.
Can I, can I make one comment along with what Bianca just said and what you just alluded to, Kathy? So with that new mandate is, and this probably is, should be probably more directed at Bob Joe, is the city going to do some signage and make it much more that people should be wearing masks at all times? Because I, you know, I walk a lot and I'd say it's about a fifty-fifty right now.
Yeah.
So what is the city going to do to help with that?
Well, one, we are definitely aware of the mandate by the county. And we're thinking about where would we put these signs, you know? One, one is when you're at Garfield Park, you put a sign up there saying you are, you're supposed to wear a mask, you know, as you walk through. So we are thinking about where, you know, now, there will be signs in businesses. You know, just like you see it with Ralphs and Vons and Pavilions and so forth. But we've got to really rethink what makes sense of where the signs should be. And I'm open for suggestions, Deborah. You know, what do you think? I mean, we definitely will put it in our city hall, you know, and in council chambers and things like that.
What about, you know, like when we have different events, when you're driving up like, not Meridian, Fremont, there, we always put signs up for the different, like, you know, the car show, all that kind of stuff or on Mission. Those prevalent places that we've put signage before. So people know coming into town, they should be wearing stuff and seeing them.
Okay. No, it's a good thought and we will, you know, look at it. But those kind of signage generally relates to having a group. And right now, we can't have groups meeting. See, so, you know, like the car shows or.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that was just an example, but I just meant.
No, I understand.
Visible or just using the local papers. I think just a matter of communicating out to the public in a more direct manner that this is a city thing that needs to be done.
And that the executive team.
I will bring that up with the city manager. No, I really think it's a good thought. So thank you, Deborah.
This is Dave. I just have one comment, if I may.
Yep. You guys, my battery was dying.
Are you charged up now, Bianca?
That helped me. I was, whoa. I didn't know my computer was dying. Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah. I don't know how many of you heard Barbara Fiera today, her one o'clock meeting or whenever it is. But there were questions surrounding the, the wearing of the mask. And I would have to say she gave a very sensible kind of answer, but it could also still lead to some confusion. And basically she was saying that, that you should always have your mask with you. And if you're, if you're walking down the street by yourself and you're taking in the fresh air, that's fine. And then if you see people coming towards you, then put your mask on. So, so it's not like, you know, you have to, the way she was presenting it was, was more of that you need to look at it from the standpoint of the situation that you're dealing with. So it's not like the minute you step foot onto your sidewalk, you slam on your mask.
All I'll say along those lines is, I walk a lot. I walk up in Monterey Hills. I walk all over. People have their masks around their necks. But even when they're walking by you, they don't bother putting it on. So it kind of defeats the point. So the ambiguity for people seems to go awry for most people. So I don't know. I mean, I don't think, and then the runners and the bikers, they're not really abiding by it either.
Yeah, I will definitely, Mayor Joe will, will talk to the city manager about it. But the executive team, you know, we meet weekly and we've talked a little bit about this already. But more in the context of, okay, what kind of signage do we need when city staff come back to work in, in the buildings? But I think this is a good point that, I think that in South Pasadena, people are probably, would tend toward being compliant if they, maybe they just don't quite know and need more help with the communication piece. So we'll talk about it and see if we can think out how we can help get that message across.
Let me, let me expand on that. Since I've been at many meetings with Barbara Fiera, when she meets with all the mayors in LA County, we meet once a week. And from her perspective, it's very simple. When you step outside, you are to wear a mask, period. Okay. Then there's a little opening here and there. If you're jogging, you cannot wear a mask because you're choking because it's harder to get the air. So that's why people are not wearing it. And I jog every morning and Bianca can vouch for that. And yeah, I, you will not see a runner, and I don't run that fast, but you don't see a runner wearing a mask because it's harder to breathe and all that. Then it comes to people walking, like you said, Deborah. Some people think that you can walk because there's not enough, I mean, that you have enough space between each other. Okay? And some areas, I think you're right, that it gets pretty crowded when, in certain areas when some people walk. But basically the rule is you need to wear a mask when you're outside. Okay, but I can tell you, there was that exception on runners and she put it, you know, walkers too. So, but it's really the other area of space, a social distance. All right. So it's not just the mask itself, but it's being six feet apart and things of that nature. Okay, that was my thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to this discussion item about the reintroduction of library services? Did we hear from everybody? Right, so we, well, thanks, thank you again, Kathy, for putting this together. It gives us a lot of things to think about. So shall we move on to communications now?
Sure.
As board president, I, all of my, I have no, nothing to comment on and my comments were covered in your presentation. City Council liaison, Bob, do you have any comments?
No, I think I made most of my comments and provided, and I thought Kathy's presentation was excellent. And if any of you have a chance and you see the library staff, thank them. They are outstanding. They've been doing a great job, whether at home or once in a while sneaking into the building, right Kathy? And all, but they're outstanding. And during this time, most of our employees, if not all of our employees, are doing a great job making new adjustments, adapting and all with this coronavirus. So if you get a chance, say thank you to the staff. The other area though, and I think you can see that the city is really faced with many budget challenges. So I think Kathy has a pretty good feel for what is needed, what's her budget's going to be for the library and all. And as she mentioned already, the part-time, you know, are either, what is it Kathy? Did we furlough or did we, you know?
We furloughed. The, all but two of our part-time staff are furloughed. Two are not furloughed because they are still working from home. That's the two part-time children's librarians. We needed them to work on summer reading program, revamping and planning. But everybody else, all of the aides and clerks that normally shelved the books and do customer service are furloughed right now.
So you can see we are taking some actions. But as we continue on, on our budget, you know, and the budget challenge that we have, we are looking forward to, you know, some of your input and, and your thoughts on it. Not on the overall budget, unless you want to, you sure can, but you know, working with the library. There was a, and I think Kathy, you probably heard this. When Karen mentioned about the survey or we, another way of calling it, it isn't the outreach. There were many comments and there were 700 contacts on that survey. And many of the comments regarding the library is keep it. It's a very important asset and resource in our city. So that was good to hear, you know, that the citizens and the people that were involved taking the survey really had a very good understanding in how important our library is. Do you have anything else to add, Kathy?
I'll just say that I think that the library is in a, in a better position in 2020 than maybe libraries were, public libraries were in the last big economic downturn in 2008. I feel like in 2008, people were still sort of trying to figure out whether libraries were relevant now that we have Google and do we really need them? And I feel like that conversation sort of happened at that time. And, you know, libraries took a lot of cuts at that time. But I feel like our customer base is very strong in general, but also especially in South Pasadena specifically. You know, residents really use the library and benefit from the library. So I think we do have a lot of strong community support, which definitely helps us and makes us happy and makes the staff happy. And it, it means a lot that people value the services and the materials that we provide. So I do encourage the board members to take the, do the budget outreach on the website and to take that survey. I did send that out to the Friends Board and encouraged them to do it as well. So hopefully they did.
And I, I don't think anybody is here from the liaison, no, no, Dave, are you the trustee for the liaison to the Friends?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
I'm sorry. Did you have any comments in regards?
I did attend the last meeting they had, which was in March. And I would have to say a lot of what was discussed there is probably moot now because of what's subsequently happened. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of rethinking and they've got, they've certainly got a lot on their plate now to try and figure out how to go forward, I think.
Okay, thank you. And then Kathy, did you have any further comments?
Yeah, I just have a few. I just wanted to give you guys kind of an update. I know that I've sent some emails to try to let you know what we're up to, but I thought I would just give a quick sort of summary of some of the things that we've been accomplishing. People have been working from home so hard that it's just, they've been amazing. All of the staff have been incredible. So on our website, we relaunched all of our local history pages and redesigned them. And now all of our finding aids, new finding aids for archival collections are available on the website. Also on the website is a master collection list that's searchable. So you can search by name or street name or whatever it is that you are looking for and find out whether we have archival collections on that topic. We also uploaded the links to the seven, 10 digital stories. So that information is now all on the local history website, which is exciting. We also redesigned the library's homepage a little bit. We added a catalog search box there. So that makes it easy for people to search the catalog. And we also added rotating banners at the top. That is a nice visual way that allows us to highlight different things that are happening at the library. So we've done some nice things on the website. We've been working hard on that. On the catalog and the integrated library system, Barb, working from home, has been incredibly productive. Now I know that she needs to work from home sometimes to get things done when she isn't in the library getting asked questions all day long. We had an upgrade to Enterprise, which is our customer side of the catalog. And that launched a really great new mobile friendly version of the catalog, which was long overdue. And now you can see what you have checked out, when it is due and things that you could not see easily before in the mobile version. We also added some improvements to the, to the display. You can now minimize the facets that are on the left-hand side of the search screen. And the information about titles, like the cover and the book reviews and stuff are now in a different format below, which is much easier to access. We've updated the customer end so that people can update and enter their own email address and their own phone number, which we need, we needed very badly because as we are trying to start email hold notifications, we need people to be able to give us their accurate email address. So that's a change that we made. We also have been working really hard on the backend to clean up the customer database. And actually, the bibliographic database too. We have, you know, we're clearing out old finds on VHS tapes and then clearing out the customers that are associated with those finds. So we've been able to do a lot of backlog. We've started the, we've got the setup for auto renewal in place. That took quite some time to get that right, to get the notifications right and to get all the, all the reports on the backend working properly so that auto renewal will work properly when we turn it on. We also, due to COVID-19, got licenses for Symphony, which is the staff side, a staff client for this, for the ILS. So the people are working on that from home. So that's a good tool for us to have. And hopefully FEMA will reimburse us for that expense. Wasn't that expensive? But it's one of those expenses that we can, you know, that are due to this crisis. So that's good. And then we have another, number of other upgrades scheduled for our software as a service, hosting offsite and some of our other products that we have with our ILS. So that's been great. We've gotten a ton done there. The public services team, you know, they had to completely redesign summer reading program. We had already booked all of our performers. We had everything figured out. They had to go completely back to the drawing board and figure out how to get performers who can stream, you know, live stream their performance or package it so that we can share it via video. We really had to revamp that completely. So they've been working really hard on that and are ready to launch that June 1st. They also did the Safer at Home Reading Challenge, which was a good practice run for the new staff who hadn't worked with the Beanstack app before. So by setting up the Safer at Home Reading Challenge in Beanstack, that kind of prepped us for the Summer Reading Program Challenge in Beanstack. We had, for the Safer. Um, we had for the Safer at Home Reading Challenge, which isn't over yet, it ends at the end of um, at the end of uh of May, we had, I wrote it down, but now I don't know where I wrote it down. Um, I want to say we had about seventy adults um in uh enrolled in the, in the challenge and about forty-five teens and about ninety-five uh children. So those were good numbers, that means people are are engaging and using that and so that was fun. They also um obviously have worked really hard on the takeout plan and the materials matching service that we will launch when the county allows us to do that. Um, and again, local history, um, we launched some digital puzzles based on images from the local history collection and that was a lot of fun, a lot of people liked that. Um, and we also um launched a living history COVID-19 um personal story collection project so that we will have some material in our local history collection when this is all over. Our local history librarian tried to see what she could find out about the twenty, uh, the nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen flu pandemic and we just hardly had anything in the collection and she didn't want that to happen for this, so she's actively seeking input and um and uh stories from the public for our collection. And um also working on um an opportunity to get our earlier newspaper microfilm um digitized and made available online, so we're in the process of working on that. So a lot of things have been going on and then just quickly, I wanted to give you a sense of uh customer usage. So since we've been closed, we've issued fifty-seven library cards via email and we've um updated or renewed or um checked on cards for forty-four other customers. Uh, fifty-seven cards in two months is a very small number of cards, but it's still good to know that people who wanted access were able to reach out to us and get a library card and get access. For um childhood uh reading, some stats on Tumble Books, which is a platform for children's um ebooks. Um, we had six hundred and sixty-three checkouts in April, which is an increase of sixty-nine percent over uh March, and March was a a big increase over February. Tutor.com, which the Friends of the Library pay for, um, has, has, has not been in a lot of use lately, but use picked up um incredibly um starting in March. Um, so we saw in April an eighty-six percent increase in um students using tutor.com. Um, they got more than forty-six hours of tutoring in April and twenty hours of tutoring in March. So again, things are just going up and up. And Canopy, which is our film streaming service, um, last April, there were four hundred and twenty-six plays and this April, there were one thousand four hundred and ninety-two plays. So people are using the resources and also um ebooks and e-audiobooks, also just a big increase. Three thousand four hundred and nine checkouts in um, in April by eight hundred and thirty-two uh unique users. And that is oh, over, let's see, February was one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two. So big increases across the board on all of the digital resources, so I just thought you might be interested in those, those statistics. And that's all that I have, we'll, we'll talk again in June and we can talk about the budget in June and also talk a little bit more about um finds and the the strategies we're gonna look at to um make sure people can access the collections, um even if we don't go find free this, this whole year.
Well, thank you very much. It, it's incredible how productive you guys have been, wow! That's, the numbers really uh are proof to it. Um, so any other um final comments or concerns, questions?
Bianca, I just have one quick one, um, and and that is regarding the passport service. Can we do, you know, you mentioned that that's a pretty good uh activity where uh where we could um get some fees on?
Yes.
And I was just thinking, can you actually do passport service while the library's closed?
Um, as soon as staff are allowed to come back in the building, I think that we can safely um do passport services, we can socially just, you know, physically distance ourselves adequately, uh, and we have these plexiglass, you know, windows with uh like screens with little windows in them. So, yeah, I think that we can definitely um do passport services once staff are allowed to return to work.
Because I, when I saw a sign at um San Marino Library that they're doing passport services, maybe I'm wrong.
They, they may be, I mean, the, the, basically, Sean, what is Sean, Sean?
Well, the whole, the whole mechanism right now, pardon me, the whole mechanism right now for passport services is a bit in flux because uh the US Department of State is a bit backloaded uh due to COVID-19. So even, they're not doing any expedited services at the moment. And uh, I typically, it's six to eight weeks for routine uh request. Uh, that is delayed without any specific parameters, so they're still doing it, um, but it's gonna be, it's gonna take a lot longer than it normally does.
I think the demand is is down a bit, obviously, because people aren't traveling. Um, you've had, we've had a few calls.
But I, but I, but I'm still getting a few requests.
Yeah, so we've had a few calls, but it's definitely, the demand is down and it's sort of like um the regional office um has been communicating with all of the passport acceptance agencies in the region and has sort of said, yeah, we understand you're not doing this right now and and that's fine. I don't know if San Marino is still doing them, if they are, again, there are people who have people working in their buildings that really is not in compliance with um the county order, so if they're doing that, that's, that's on them. But we, yeah, I think that once staff can be in the building, we can definitely do passports again. And we can see it, I've already talked a bit to the city manager about whether we want to look at that as a, as a revenue stream, I just don't know um how much it will pick up in, you know, in the coming year when people are still not traveling and and worried about um being out and about, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think um, if there's no other uh comments or questions, then we'll go ahead and uh adjourn the meeting at uh, what is it, eight, eight fifty-six? So again, thank you, everybody, for uh plugging in and, and your battery didn't run down like mine did. I'm worried, I'm gonna have to get close to the plug with my laptop. All right, well, good night, everybody, and thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.